Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, the public laws of 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Aspern Park Press on June 27, 2023, and was duly advertised in the press issue of June 30, 2023. All municipal clerks of the townships, the boroughs, within the regional high school districts have been duly notified, and the requirements of the postings is met on June 27, 2023. Please stand and join me in the class.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the justice for all.
Mr. Skinner, are there any changes to the agenda?
Just one second, let me just take roll call. It's okay. No, no, I'm filling in for Mr. Boyce, so. Mr. Assitola.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello.
Here.
Mrs. Higley.
Here.
Mrs. Lavin.
Here.
Ms. McCollum.
Here.
Mr. Priest.
Here.
Mr. Messinger.
Here.
Mrs. Bruno, she is absent with notice, and Mr. Bruno.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Yes.
And to...
We have to go easy on him.
And to your first question, in addition to the items that were noted on the agenda that was printed prior to the meeting, the board also discussed, for exception number three, the student discipline matters, as well as other student matters, and the board also discussed, for exception number eight, personnel items as noted on the agenda. That's all? That's all?
Okay, great. May I have a motion to approve the January 4th reorganization meeting?
Motion, second.
Mrs. Lavin, Mrs. Capiello with second. Any discussion, board? We're not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Assitola.
Here. Yes.
Mrs. Capiello.
Yes.
Mrs. Higley.
Upstate.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mrs. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
And Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Justice Sandoh communicates on file with the Board Secretary. Please now permit me to throw it over to Dr. Hazel with her superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Good evening. Just a few updates for our board and for our public. We are very excited as a school district. Each of the schools will be hosting spring musicals. There's an exciting array of musicals that will be going on, beginning at the end of February through March. Those dates of our musicals can be found on our district website, as well as our school calendars, and our advisors and students, you know, work so hard in putting together just exceptional performances for the school, as well as the local community as well. We always get tremendous turnouts for those events, so we're super excited about that. Thank you, Antonio.
Hi, Antonio.
And it was nice seeing you at the Marlboro basketball game as well.
Yes, it was.
Yes. The New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, that is the New Jersey Test of Record, that will be occurring in the Freehold Regional High School District and in all six high schools, Monday, March 11 through the 14th. Those days will be early dismissing school days. You will see a resolution on this board agenda to adjust our calendar to meet the needs of our students taking those assessments. And those are days that really, the expectations for our students, for our juniors who are taking the test, really to have the best test environment for them. A number of support programs, parents in the junior class have received notices from the administrators in the building about all of the supports that are available to the students after school, if any students and their families would like their children engaged in those, really gives them an extra level of preparation before they engage in the standardized assessment. As I've mentioned to the board and to the public before, this year we are going through a self-study. We are going through our middle states accreditation. This is when the Freehold Regional High School District, there's an outside objective entity, educators that come to our district for a series of days and spend time with us, really looking at every facet of our educational organization, and really just, you know, honing in on the quality and the student achievement that fosters, you know, continuous school improvement. That's really the purpose of this evaluation. It occurs every seven years. We have planning teams and structures in place. We have a district system planning committee, and we also have school component planning teams. It's essential, this is a process where we want the input from all of our stakeholders. Parents were surveyed in the beginning of the school year in regard to their child and their experiences with the Freehold Regional High School District and their particular high school, and also there were staff surveys and student surveys. And when I went to visit the classrooms in November, I really conveyed to the students, you know, how important it was for them to complete those surveys and to really share their voice in regard to their academic programs and their full comprehensive experience that they have in their high school. And, you know, we were very, very pleased, you know, over 8,000 students, you know, participated in that survey, and our team, the system team and the school teams have been combing through all of that data so that we really, you know, gain insight into our constituencies and, you know, their views and feelings on, you know, the educational program and the comprehensive experience that we offer here at the Freehold Regional High School District. We facilitated a meeting on January 31st with our system team. We have student representatives that partake in that process with us, and we have two senior students that serve on the executive student cabinet that are going to share their experience in partaking in, you know, meetings with myself as superintendent in our executive student cabinet meetings, but also the processes that occur at the district level and at the school level in order to get student, you know, input. So we'll hear from them in just a moment. But for the board, the district will be having their middle states visitation. It's on December 9th of 2024, so, you know, this upcoming fall, and they will, the visitors will be with us till December 12th. So really, that's an opportunity. It really is just tremendous validation of the great work that is done, you know, here at the Freehold Regional High School District across all of our schools and all of our programs. So without further ado, I think it's, you know, you know, really for the, for the board and for our public to really hear firsthand from two of our students who serve on the executive student cabinet, there are six members on the superintendent's cabinet. This evening, two of them are here, our representative from Colts Neck High School, J.J. Sefeli, and our representative from Manalapan High School, Emma Broderman. So I'd like to invite both of them to the podium. I know they want to share their experiences on the cabinet and their work in particular with the middle states process.
Good evening.
How you doing?
My name is J.J. Sefeli, and I'm a senior at Colts Neck High School. Emma and I represent the executive student cabinet. The executive student cabinet works closely with the superintendent and serve as the student representative on the board of education.
You speak closer because I can't hear a word you're saying. I'm sorry.
Emma and I represent the executive student cabinet. The executive student cabinet work closely with the superintendent and serve as the student representatives on the board of education. This year, this year, we are participating in the middle states accreditation planning process for our middle states visit in December 2024. The second middle states system team meeting on January 31st included stakeholders from the middle states internal coordination team, as well as parents, industry partners, and members of the executive student cabinet. At this meeting, we reviewed the profile of the graduate, reviewed survey data from students, parents, and teachers, and began to draft our objectives for the next seven years of the Middle States Association Accreditation.
Thank you, Jordan.
Good evening. My name is Emma Broderman, and I'm a senior at Manalapan High School. At this meeting, we participated in providing feedback on several proposed objectives. One was to sustain our high achievement levels in the New Jersey Graduation Assessment in both math and English. This objective highlights our commitment to upholding the strong academic performance in our district, ensuring all students are well-prepared for their futures. Two, increase opportunities for student participation in learning communities, including our CTE programs and career-focused concentrations. Additionally, efforts are underway to enhance dual enrollment opportunities, enabling students to earn college credits during our high school years. The final objective is to enhance how information about academic progress and future goal planning is shared with students and parents by 2030. Following this meeting, each of the six high schools will provide feedback on the proposed objectives, setting the stage for the third cycle, developing action plans for the forthcoming seven years.
Great, thank you so much. So we'll have one additional systems team meeting. Students will partake, as well as our administrators and our staff throughout the district in April, but right now we are in the feedback review process where the outlined objectives are now being shared with our staff in each of the six buildings. So we're excited for that feedback. I also want to thank Mr. Bruno, our board president, who participated and has participated in our system team meetings. It is always so beneficial to have his representative voice in our large room as we are going through kind of the planning processes and really going through all of the district data and survey information from our constituents. So thank you so much, you know, Mr. Bruno, for being a part of that and for sharing the information with the board. This evening, we have a report from our auditor. Mr. Bob Swisher is here with us this evening, who will really step through, and this is really timely in preparation for what we present our annual budget to the public at an upcoming board meeting. But I know today you will step through for the board, the internal controls and our, you know, finances and where we stand as a district at this present time. So thank you, Mr. Swisher, for being here this evening.
Thank you. I'm actually filling in for my brother. He is the one that actually ran the audit here. I got the call at 6:15 tonight that he wasn't feeling well, so went to the bullpen, and I'm here to speak to you tonight.
We appreciate it.
No worries. So, you know, I've been doing the audit. We're here to determine whether your financial statements are a financial audit and a compliance audit. Your financial statement is fairly stated, and are your records in compliance with the rules and regulations of the state of New Jersey. You know, we're not here to determine if you're efficient and things like that, but more on the accounting terms, you know, financially and compliance-wise. So what we do is we design tests, review your internal controls, we test your records, your payroll, your cafeteria, up and down, you know, your purchasing, things like that, to determine if things are in compliance. And once those tests are all done, we're able to form an opinion, and we have an unqualified opinion in this, this year's report, that your financial statements are fairly stated. As far as compliance, things were in very good shape. We had one minor area of noncompliance, and that's actually a good thing. The state of New Jersey has lots of rules and regulations, but one of what they have is you can't have too much money reserved in your cafeteria. And in Freehold, we had a little bit more than you're allowed to have. You're allowed to have three months' average expenditures, and so we're slightly over that. So you'll have a corrective action plan that you'll adopt that will basically say, we just spent some more money in the cafeteria, you know, buying equipment and things like that to bring that surplus down. Overall, the district is in a good financial shape. The fund balances are down slightly from last year, but nothing to write home about. The one thing I always, I like to say about Freehold Regional School District is, you know, we do 38 school districts. This is the only district we have where the financials actually write their own report. You know, in the real world, outside of, you know, school boards and municipalities, the client writes the report and we commit an audit. That's not the case in probably 98% of the school districts in New Jersey, but Freehold, your finance staff, Sean and Trish do a great job. They're able to put together financial statements themselves, and we actually do an actual audit. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the audit process or anything in particular about the Freehold report, if anybody has any questions.
Any board members have questions? I don't think there's any, but thank you very much. We love to hear that.
Yeah, you're in very good hands.
Love to hear that, and we know we're very fortunate to have those two.
Yes.
And the business staff, not Mr. Boyce's staff and Mrs. Smith, they do an incredible job.
They do a great job, absolutely.
They put up the influence twice a week, yeah. But thank you so much.
Have a good night.
I hope your brother's okay.
Thank you.
I have one space question for you. Looking at the surveys, was there anything on there out of the five or six that surprised you?
You know, typically, yeah. You know, we shared at our systems team meeting, and traditionally, this is actually the third middle states that I personally have been through in my career, and it was done, you know, our survey at the beginning of the school year where we had, you know, those tremendously hot days where our district was on an early dismissing schedule. So sometimes, you know, in reading through those, it was around kind of our facilities. You know, it would be great to have air conditioning. Also, at that time, you know, you know, some of the students, you know, were talking through, you know, transportation, because sometimes at the beginning of the school year, until all of the routes are totally established and everything is in sync, we sometimes experience, you know, some late buses, so there were, you know, some issues that came up, you know, regarding transportation, you know, air conditioning, you know, facility-like concerns. But, you know, overwhelmingly, as we read through these, I think I just need to, you know, those were the things, you know, some of those we have no control over in food service. Kids are always talking about, you know, the food choices and snacks and stuff. Those are common, but it was really, you know, overwhelmingly positive from our students, which was over 8,000 students that were surveyed, just really talking about their experience, both in the classroom and outside the classroom, about their experiences, their connections to the teachers, about their learning in school, and what the high school has done for them was really compelling. And reading through, actually, you know, I was thoroughly impressed, and I say this to the team all of the time, on just how articulate the students were in conveying, you know, their feelings on their experience in their high school. I believe, you know, that is a credit to the work across this district, both at the central office level administratively, and, you know, and really most importantly, you know, to our teachers and to our advisors that are working so closely with our students each and every day. You know, I say it's really relationships, engagement, and then growth for the regional, and that is really compelling in what I read when I was going through those written comments and those narratives from our students and as well from our parents. We didn't have, we had a couple of, you know, hundred parents respond. I would have liked to have more, you know, written, you know, feedback from our parents, but our students and our staff really gave us a lot of information.
We're number 8,000.
It is.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We're going to do a board report, and we have finance tonight. They had on Tuesday. And Mr. Messinger from Marlboro is going to give that presentation.
All right, thank you. Well, there were really three topics for the meeting that we had this past Tuesday night. As Mr. Swisher just noted, his brother John came to the meeting and walked us through the most recent audit, so we really got an extensive update going line, lined the line on what the surpluses were, budgeting expenses, et cetera, et cetera. That was the topic that we spent the most amount of time on. With respect to the Architect of Record RFP, we had five firms submit bids, we had an evaluation team that consisted of members in the administration, and what this evaluation team did is they scored and commented on each firm. And one of the, one of the things I want to point out that we thought was a good thing is one of the members of the team is a former building principal, so it was nice to have someone who has experience in a building and deals with the various incidents and delays that may impact our students vis-à-vis construction projects that might be going on. So that was good. And the bottom line is, the team identified Spizel Architectural Group as the top choice for the Architect of Record, and the appointment of them is on tonight's agenda. And then lastly, the third and final topic was just giving an update on the caving of the Marlboro High School parking lot. And that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And now we're going to have a motion to approve E3. May I have a motion to approve E3?
Motion.
Mr. Capiello. And Mrs. Higley, you have two. Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Capiello.
Yes.
Mrs. Higley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Ms. McCollum.
Yes.
Mr. Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Assitola.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
And Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any changes?
Yes, Mr. Bruno, yes, so.
You have some changes to the agenda?
Yes. In addition to the items that are noted on the agenda, following changes for G6, approval of change status, please note that Marisandra Collins is being removed. For G7, leave of absence, we, board is extending Bridget D.H. Dixon, leave of absence through April 9, 2024. And G10, approval of six-period assignments, note that the following names are being removed: Merinda Collins, Courtney Kalfowski, Samantha Katz, Lindsay Pittschnewick, and I apologize for mispronouncing, and Ruth Shue. Also, the following agenda items are being added. For G1, approval of resignations, resignation of Jennifer Patton, effective date, March 9, 2024. G3, approval of appointments, please add the name Lauren Quick, long-term English teacher, long-term substitute English teacher Howell High School, March 4, 2024 through May 30, 2024. G10, the following additional six-period teaching assignments: Laurie Hunter, Courtney Kalfowski, Samantha Katz, Ruth Shue, and Kelly Whitley. Finally, there's one additional resolution item tonight. It'll be Resolution H7. Be resolved at an accordance with the New Jersey Public School Contracts Law, the Freehold Regional High School District engages Spizel Architectural Group as Architect of Record to provide professional consulting, architectural and engineering support as per the agreement on file in the office of the board secretary.
You wear two hats well.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to have public participation, and I see we have Mr. Scully and Mrs. Scully kind of come up as a team. How are you?
Hi.
They're from Colts Neck, actually from Howell. Their son goes to Colts Neck.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Julie Scully. This is my husband, Sean. I am a parent of four boys, two that have graduated from Colts Neck and two that are currently still here. I'm also the president of the Fifth Quarter Club, which is a nonprofit organization that supports the Colts Neck Football Team here. All of my boys play football here, and I started this organization 10 years ago, which is my 10th season. The reason I'm here today is on behalf of the football team. We are the only school in the district that is unable to use the audio that is intended for our football games at the field. The poles that are intended for our speakers are not being used. Instead, the speakers were taken down and placed on storage units facing away from our field, which doesn't allow our parents, fans, anybody to hear because they're facing away from the field. They were taken down because of a resident who lives behind the football field who continuously addresses our administration about the noise on a Saturday afternoon, calls our principal, calls the superintendent to say that the noise is too loud. We're also required to use a decibel reader. We take this decibel reader with the principal, with the AD, and we go to the other side of the field, and we make sure that we're correctly using the speakers. We were forced as a club to purchase our own speakers because of the lack of hearing anything pertaining to the game. A few years back, this person had boxes built to house our speakers to keep the sound down. We have five Saturday games a year. It's five, that's all that we do, and they're on a Saturday afternoon. It's not fair that every other school in our district can use their speakers to their full capacity. We, we are not allowed to use them because of one person. I've had so many complaints, being the president of this club, from parents that they can't hear. The cheer team can't hear their music. The dance team, when they go out at halftime, can't hear because the sound has to be at a certain level. I've called, it's embarrassing. The main focus here is for our players, our band, our cheer, or dance, all the students who come to cheer us on. I have called the board of health many times, and we are following the guidelines, and the person in charge tells me what needs to be done. They are in awe that this is happening at what is supposed to be a fun and inviting event for the school and the town. Even with the decibel reading at the required level, this person still calls our superintendent, still calls administration to complain. Something needs to be done. It's sad that one person has the power for the last 10 years to have such a negative impact on so many student athletes. And in my opinion, as the president of this club, and we have a board also, it's disheartening that when we go to other schools in our district that on a Friday night or a Saturday afternoon, we could hear everything that's going on, except when we come to Colts Neck. Really, something needs to be done. We would like that the speakers be put back on the poles that they're there, they're intended for. We have these huge poles in our stadium, and nothing is on them because the speakers are facing away from the stadium. I think it's a disservice for, and it's not fair, to be honest, because the other schools are doing it. I live in Howell. I could hear Howell High School on a Friday night till 11 o'clock. I know it's because one person is complaining, but not this one person can have this much power to, to shut us down that we can't hear anything on a Saturday afternoon. It's not, it's 12 o'clock in the afternoon. And I know this might not seem like a big deal, but for the last 10 years, this has been going on, and like I said, I've had four boys come through this program, and I've been fighting this fight for 10 years. Thank you.
I just want to sign off. Congratulations on just on season.
Thank you.
And, you know, you brought up four great young men.
Thank you.
And so thank you for that.
Thanks. Thanks for listening.
We have one more. Jeremy Ross?
Just so you can hear me. Good evening to the board. Thank you for this opportunity for my wife and I. I'm Jeremy. This is Vanessa from 75 Plus, the borough of Freehold. We do have one issue that we're very passionate about, and that's why we are here. We are parents of twins in two separate high schools, Colts Neck High School and Freehold Borough High School, and we're here as a plea to please reconsider the current graduation schedule that's in place for June. Dr. Hazel, I apologize if you didn't get a chance to read the email we sent earlier today, so I'll try to do my best to summarize. It basically created a conflict. We know there's dozens of conflicts identified, and our conflict, due to the fact that we have twins, you know, we do feel that it's unfair and logistically unfeasible to attend two separate graduations that are currently set with a store time of only one hour difference apart. of only one hour difference apart. This schedule as is immediately creates a situation where we would miss the end of one ceremony and the beginning of another at best. What is more concerning is, disconcerting is the fact that we would be missing significant milestones of achievement that both of our sons have earned through their hard work and dedication. They both started their high school careers during one of the most significant awful pandemic events in our country's history. And throughout their time in high school in Freehold Borough and Coltsneck, they persisted and didn't allow the setbacks to keep them from achieving personal and school goals. They both deserve the full support of their entire family to see them reach this pinnacle of their high school experience. We are aware that there are several families in our unique situation, being the parents of twins, we're not the only ones, there are a few. We're also aware that the schools have received specifically at least 55 different conflicts with the proposed dates. And I know that number is, is growing. As supportive parents, we've given hundreds of hours of time, money, and effort into supporting the Freehold Regional High School District programs, including the ROTC program, Coltsneck wrestling team, Coltsneck lacrosse team, Freehold Borough Music Parents, National Honor Society, and several other programs over the past four years. We volunteered selflessly and given our time on nights, weekends, and throughout the summer to ensure the success of each and every one of these programs when other staff members and teachers are unavailable to assist and have never asked for credit or recognition for our service to the Freehold Regional High School District. Because of this, the thought of not being a full part of each graduation is truly upsetting and creating immense tension in our family, which is why we're here. We would implore, Dr. Hazel, if it's in your power and members of the board, we would implore you to reconsider the span of time between the graduations to allow us a chance to experience this with each of our sons' achievements. I know there are challenges to six graduations, all taking place in a single day. I understand that. We understand that. We would challenge you to logically reconsider the idea of either hosting six graduations over two days at more convenient intervals or creating more time between the graduations to minimize conflicts like ours. Given our dedication to the Freehold Regional High School District, we will insist that accommodations be made to eliminate the hardships on our families. We've done our part for the last four years and now ask that we be afforded some empathy over this situation. I will say already, Dr. Doniu, in some conversations with him, has been a tremendous support. We appreciate everything that he's done within his span of control at Coltsneck to assist us with that accommodation. But we're just asking some empathy for our family and all the families that share this same burden coming into what should be a very exciting time where now we have to kind of stress out and have that burden on, on how we can actually make this work.
So you have a three o'clock graduation at Freehold High School? Then you have a five o'clock.
Four o'clock at Marlboro.
And you have a eight o'clock.
Yes. And we're fortunate, there's an hour between their families that are simultaneous graduations as well.
Four and five.
We have a four and a five.
Mr. and Mrs. Ross, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Yes. So, you know, congratulations, you know, to your two sons. And, and this is a tremendous milestone, you know, in, for your two boys and for your family. You know, our district used to be, and then I'm not going to go through the entire history, where the district had one graduation. And over time, you know, the administrative team, you know, really assessed every conflict, you know, that's in our district and did do our very best to accommodate, you know, the families. Every year, the conflicts are a little bit different. There are some years where we can hold two graduations and leave more time in between. There are other years, like this year, where we need four graduation times due to the number of conflicts. And in particular schools like your boys attend, they're in conflict with every school. You know, we are graduating, you know, over 2,500 students. Myself and my team and our six high school principals, you know, do our best to, you know, make this a special moment for every graduate and for every family. That's what we take great pride in, in terms of our preparation for these events. I know Dr. Doniu and Dr. Ross will do everything. We've done this before in the years that we transitioned from one graduation in the district to multiple graduations, to be able to put in all accommodations, you know, to really help the family in terms of parking, specialized seating. I'm sure Dr. Doniu has kind of helped me through that. In some situations, even, you know, needs are pulled at different times to allow the time. This, you know, the four times, you know, really, the two days, we address the two days. The day of graduation is our last day of school. So our students, the seniors, come to school that morning for their graduation practice and kind of the last time to be with their class in the school building. So they still need time for their practice and for what they need to accomplish at the school and then be able to go home, get ready, and be able to come back in time to be able to do all the lineups and preparations, you know, at the school. So it really is not feasible for us to be able to, you know, make the time any earlier because we're instructing school that day, have graduation practice going on, and then really getting an entire building ready for the facilitation of graduation. So the times with the four, I really can't accommodate. And the two days, that next day, is not a day that our staff is with us. So graduation day, you know, is there, and we do that as a rate date, which we hope we never have to use because we would really be on a skeleton staff for the facilitation, you know, of those programs. So, you know, we do our best, you know, for all of our graduates as well as still running, you know, school on that day to meet everybody's needs. We will do everything, you know, within our power to support you and any other, you know, families that need it, which we always do in going above and beyond. But in terms of, you know, the day, this is the day we need to do it, one day, graduation day. And I can't, you know, go to five times or, you know, do any spreading out where we're too late in the evening or can't finish what we need to do during, you know, our morning and school day.
Thank you, and I hope our plea will serve families in the future when there is time to properly consider.
Yep, and each year, we look at every, every student, every, you know, conflict and do our very best in organizing it. And we will do whatever we need to do, you know, for your boys and your family.
Thank you, to the members of the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck. Congratulations. There's no other public participation? There is no other public participation? May I have a motion to approve G1 through G14?
Second.
May I have any discussion, Board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Higley.
Yes, but I'm saying G2 for Laura and G10 for Matthew Colson.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Ms. McCaff.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Mr. Astetola.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiella.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear. I apologize. Mr. Messing.
Yes.
And Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Motion's passed.
May I have a motion to take H1 through H2, program operations, building, transportation, and physical plan?
Motion, second.
Mrs. Higley.
Mrs. Higley.
Mrs. Capiella.
Mrs. Capiella, second. Discussion, please. Not hearing any discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mrs. McCaff.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Mr. Astetola.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiella.
Yes.
Mrs. Higley.
Yes.
Mr. Messing.
Yes.
And Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
May I have a motion to take J1 through K2, educational programs and administration?
Motion.
I hear one.
There, Mrs. Higley.
Okay.
And second, Mrs. Capiella.
Mrs. Capiella, second. Discussion, Board? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McCaff.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Mr. Astetola.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiella.
Yes, on everything except on J16, I'm staying from Michael Capiella. And on K1, I'm staying from Dr. Lee's.
He noted. Mrs. Higley.
Yes, except on J16, I'm, I'm staying from Matthew Colson. And on K1, now for Hazel and Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messing.
Yes.
And Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Any board member has old business tonight?
I'd just like to come back on Laura Lum, who I worked with when she was building supervisor, had a few very contentious, and I would work with her.
And I would do the same. So Laura was a good friend, a colleague. We worked together at Howell High School for a long time. And a lady who has come over personal and just a very strong person and a great worker and never complained. So we'll miss her. She's been a custodian, a substance to custodian, a building supervisor, and then, of course, a district supervisor. And she'll be retiring as of July 1 with over 25 years in our system. So we're going to miss her. Good person. Anybody else with old business? Mrs. Uggert? Anybody with new business?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. President.
Yes, Amanda has some too.
Okay, you want me to go first?
You go first, Brad.
Okay, just want to thank Jeremy B. Brodmann for being here tonight, the first winner of the Presidential Award as being the best employee district. Thank you, Mr. Brodmann. And almost undefeated in the Division One Wrestling School.
Okay, we'll just go on to some chat.
Yes, if I could. So this past weekend, on February 3rd, was the Southern Regional Conference for NJ OSA Future Health Professionals, which is a club geared towards students who want to pursue careers in healthcare. And we had quite a good showing from the Freehold Regional District, the two chapters from Marlboro High School and Freehold Borough High School. And I'd just like to recognize those students who placed in the top eight of their competitions. So in behavioral health, are now Mark Devaki from Freehold High School, placed second. In CPR, the team of Saren Ahmad and Ronald Milnarski from Freehold High School, placed third. In dental science, Gabriela Hana from Freehold High School, placed second. Alan Sultan, also from Freehold High School, placed sixth. The EMT team from Marlboro High School of Gianna Scalia and Adil Sonoro, placed third. In human protein development, Miles Kaplan from Marlboro, placed sixth. In medical spelling, Alyssa Tabatnik from Marlboro, placed seventh. In sports medicine, Nicolette Huthnick from Marlboro, placed first. And Isabella Cardio, uh, Cardio, excuse me, from Freehold High School, placed eighth. And all those who placed fifth or above are now qualified for the state competition.
Thank you. Do we have any new business? Board members, any new? New business? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion here.
Well, you were really slow tonight with that.
I would all, I just would also like.
You usually just do it before I say it.
Wait a second, wait a second.
Yeah, I just want to recognize Mrs. Cohen from Anavon and Mary Ann, who are here with us this evening. Thank you for always partaking in our board meetings and being such a great representative of Anavon High School and supporting us on everything. So thank you for being here tonight.
Now, who's the mayor this time around after you were going? Congratulations.
So we have a motion for this.
We have a motion? And I just wanted to thank the other administrator. I just want to thank all the other administrators who were here tonight too, to get my award. All right.
Hey, Mr. Bruno, can we, can we just, if I can for one second? I want first of all, I say Mrs. Donovan did a good job that I feel for Mr. Voice. And, you know, we do go over the audit report, but I think we need to say, what a great job, Mr. Voice, and this has to do with that, I know. But I think it's worth repeating what a wonderful job they do. So thank you.
You were too shy to me up here tonight.
Did you have anything?
We'll talk about, we'll talk about that. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn? I heard one. And I need a second.
Second, Mrs. Capiella.
All those in favor.
Everyone's in favor?
Everybody's in favor.
Okay, I hear you know. All right, 8:46. We are done.
Thank you.